Well, good evening, everyone. And thank you very much for being here. This is the Burnsville City Council Work Session for Tuesday, December 9. Our work sessions are informal, and we're very glad that our legislators are here to talk with us. And we usually get right to our agenda for our work sessions because we have a lot of work to do. So, welcome to our legislators who are here. And what we're going to do is go around the table so that our citizens who are watching us will know who's present. I'm Elizabeth Kautz. I'm the mayor.
Suzanne Nguyen, council member.
Dan Keely, council member.
Dana Hardy, city staff director of administrative services.
Heather Johnston, city manager.
Drew Christensen, state representative-elect.
Sandra Mason. I represent 51A, which is Western Eagan and all of northern Burnsville.
Dan Hall, Senator, Burnsville.
Bill Coughlin, Burnsville City Council.
Mary Sherry, Burnsville Council.
Michelle Collins, city clerk.
And in our audience, we have staff.
Jenny Faulkner, county attorney.
Steve Albrecht, public records director.
I'm Terry Ritchie, one of the assistant fire chiefs. Lead of government fire chiefs.
Welcome, everybody. So, we're going to get to the first agenda, and we thank our legislators for coming. And our city manager, Heather Johnston, will walk us through. Heather.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Members of the council, members of legislative delegation, thank you for coming here tonight. I'm going to -- you all have the legislative priorities or the legislative agenda in front of you that was adopted by the city council. I'm going to walk through it. And the city council last year, I believe, was the first year, has broken the legislative agenda into three distinct parts. The first part are the priorities. So, these are the top five things that they have directed staff to work on during the legislative session. The second grouping is legislative positions of which the council is supportive. So, it's sort of an authorization, not doing active work on it, but if, for example, you have -- there's a bill and you want a letter of support or things like that, they've authorized staff to articulate the city's position on those items. The third grouping is the monitoring and tracking. And so, these are past positions that the city council has taken, that they still support, however, don't have an actively authorized staff to go and testify or provide letters of support or anything like that. And so, it just gives you a sense. When we talked to you last year about this, the advice you gave us was, tell us what the council thinks about as many things as possible, but maybe give us some idea about what's the most important. And so, that's what the council decided to do last year, and so, you'll see that reflected again this year. Unless there are questions, I'm going to start walking through these, and I won't read them to you. I'm just going to kind of highlight them. But please stop me if you have any questions at all for myself or for any members of the council. Obviously, they can articulate the policy positions as well, so.
And then, before we are done with this, and you've asked your questions, I'm going to have some questions about who's going to carry some things for us. So, I just want you to think about that.
Thank you. The first, number-one legislative priority is one that you've seen before. And thanks to Representative Mason and Senator Carlson, both sponsored this legislation for us last year, which we appreciate. And this has to do with our property maintenance code enforcement. As you all probably know, the city of Burnsville has an aging holding stock and have wanted to do proactive property maintenance efforts. This is in support of that effort. Specifically, the legislation would include the authority to levy administrative fines, but also clarify that both statutory and home rule cities have the authority to issue administrative citations for code violations and to assess these types of administrative citations. This is another tool to make sure that we're able to address any problems with our existing holding stock, so.
Heather, on that one, do you have specific codes that aren't working for you that we can shore up better? Or any thoughts on that?
Madam Mayor, Senator Hall, we do. We have some specific statutory authority that we would just, like, clarified on this. And so, we have -- we can get you a copy of the legislation that was offered last year. I do believe we also have a kind of a one-page summary that gives you a little bit more detail that Ms. Hardy has here, and we can pass that out.
I know what you're talking about, yeah.
But we'll get the specific legislation to you as well.
Thank you.
The second item is preserving the Host Community Economic Development Grant Program. Recent measures by the Pollution Control Agency have had the effect of reducing revenue that the city gains on its host fee agreements. The legislature passed a Host Community Economic Development Grant Program, which we were very grateful for, and that helps cities that are impacted most by this and host communities that are here in the metro area. We support the continued appropriation of that program, and again, thank you for your support on that in the past.
By the way, Heather.
Yes, please. Senator.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Mayor, it's like being in the Senate.
Yes, absolutely.
I want to make sure on that.
Yes.
We did take this, just to let you know, I've already taken all these to our researchers and had them go over them a little bit. One of the things they said about preserving the Host Community Economic Development Program is that it's a baseline, and they expect it to continue, just to give you a little feedback.
Thank you for that.
One of the things that we're always concerned about, Senator, is that it is, but you never know what gets.
Right.
So, we want you to be vigilant about that, please.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's important, and then we hear that.
Yes, okay, thank you.
The third legislative priority is closing the freeway landfill. The city is supportive of the MPCAs' efforts to close the freeway landfill in an environmentally sustainable manner. We are in active negotiations with the agency, who has been very helpful on this, as well as the landowner and Dakota County. And so, we want to make sure that that landfill is closed properly. We would prefer that it's closed in a way that provides maximum ability for economic development in that area as well. Number four is metropolitan governance. The city of Burnsville favors a council-of-governments-type model using elected officials, city and county officials, to serve as the Metropolitan Governing Board for the Met Council. The city further opposes mandatory targets for affordable housing or mandatory inclusion of housing provisions that would really usurp the local governing control with respect to the planning processes or our local zoning code. The fifth and final of the top five priorities is residential care facilities. The city would like the authority to regulate the locations of residential care facilities within its jurisdiction. Specifically, we would support legislation that would establish non-concentration standards for these types of facilities to prevent clustering in residential areas. We have an interest in preserving the balance between things like group homes and other uses in residential neighborhoods.
Councilmember Keely.
Go ahead.
And then, I'll come back to some.
I just wanted to remind our legislators, and I know you know our city well, we're a city of cul-de-sacs. And so, I think the interest here, and we have to be very careful, and I have been on the League of Minnesota Cities Committees and the Metro Cities Committees, tried to make it clear that we're not opposed to group homes.
Right.
But because we're a city of cul-de-sacs and short, dead-end streets, there are streets with five to 10 houses on them, and conceivably, all 10, or nine out of 10 could be group homes. And we do have some areas of concentration already that have concerned residents only because, once the concentration, you know, once it started to get more concentrated, they didn't object to the first home, but the second and third, they did.
Madam Mayor.
So, we just want to be sure you understand we're not opposed to group homes.
Senator.
Thank you. I just wondered, do you have a -- what's your policy now as far as how many can come into a neighborhood like that?
We don't have that because zoning is zoning.
Yeah.
And land use. And the state has authority to license these homes.
Right.
But they don't communicate with us on where they go.
Well.
But they need to, because anybody who wants to purchase a home can go purchase a home. Isn't that correct?
Madam Councilor, Senator Hall, the state has actually gotten much better at communicating where they are than they were even a year ago.
You're a pole, but that's good information.
So, that's been an improvement. Yeah, that's been an improvement within the last year. But as the mayor indicated, we have very limited authority in terms of regulating these locations. The statute is 245A.11, and so, we just really do -- we don't have many options here in terms of what we can do.
Okay.
Okay.
Councilmember Sherry.
Just a follow-up, because I don't want -- I know Dan is waiting, too. But I just want to remind you that there are Class A cities, Minnesota, Minneapolis and St. Paul.
Can.
Through a bipartisan effort, did pass that to limit the concentration in their communities, and all we want is the same.
With authorization from the state.
Yep.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
And have you, excuse me, have you drafted a bill on that or given us information on that, or you just want us to watch it?
No. What we do need is a bill that'll help us.
Madam Mayor, Senator Hall, if you'd like us to work with you to draft a bill, we would be delighted to do that.
Sure, let's do that.
Thank you. Councilmember Keely.
Thank you. That was my point. All we're asking for is the same authority that Minneapolis and St. Paul has, and of the five things, let's say, comparing changing the metropolitan governance, for instance, and to getting residential care facilities control as Minneapolis and St. Paul has, to me, of the top five, this is listed fifth, but it's probably the one, in my opinion, that has the -- it's a lower-hanging fruit, because there's a precedent set for the two cities now, and we're just asking to have that same authority. And so, it might be a more makeable putt than some of these other ones. But it is something that is a serious concern of ours, has been for years. So, hopefully, that's one that we can get across the end zone this year.
Number one and number five.
Yes.
Hello, Senator. Thank you so much for coming. We have Senator Carlson. And Senator Carlson, our top five priorities, we just went through. But you've seen all of this from last year, and we thank you for carrying the bill on the property maintenance, and we would like for you to carry it again.
Great, sure, I will.
There you go. Thank you for coming.
Our city manager, Heather Johnston, is walking us through our priorities. And so, but thank you for being here. We appreciate your.
Madam Mayor, members of council, members of the legislative delegation, the second grouping is the supporting position statements. The first item is related to development and redevelopment. The city of Burnsville wants the maximum flexibility with respect to existing tools assisting economic development. Specifically, we support flexibility in the usage of tax increment financing and oppose the diversion of funds from Met Council's livable community program for non-development-related uses. We also support the new economic development tools that have been mentioned and discussed at the legislature, including the New Market Tax Credit Program and things like This Old Shop. And so, we just believe that, especially as a city that's committed to redevelopment, that we can use all the tools that we can possibly muster. The second item is local land use controls. The city of Burnsville opposes legislation that reduces or eliminates the city's authority in the areas of local zoning, land use, comprehensive planning, transportation planning, or anything related to the current statutory authority for cities to do their own zoning and planning. The next item, number three, is the daycare facilities and licensing. The city accepts the statutory allowance for daycares as a home occupation in residential districts. However, we want to make sure that that's only when the dwelling unit is occupied by the daycare owner. We don't want a concentration of these types of things in, say, rental properties.
The other part about that is that this is in our residential neighborhood, and if the home is not occupied by the owner, now it is a business facility, and that becomes a problem to the neighbors. Yes.
Mary. If you need an example, I have one in my neighborhood. Nobody lives there. There's nothing in the house except daycare.
Wow.
Jenny is nodding because she -- they have investigated it. The police have confirmed it. It's operating as a business.
In a residential neighborhood.
In a residential neighborhood.
I didn't think you could do that.
Well, you can't.
You can't.
Suppose it, Lee.
I understand that the.
But we have no way to enforce it.
Senator.
The League of Minnesota Cities has a concern on this also.
That's because we brought it to them. We brought it to the league.
Yeah. And I think all of our cities, whether Eagan, Apple Valley, and this is why you see the local land use control, because now it gets to our zoning, and we're having a business in residential area, and that's not allowed under our zone.
So, Madam Mayor, how do you handle that?
Well, we're hoping that you'll give us the authority to evict and close the business.
Okay. And so.
It's in a residential neighborhood.
And is that legislation, again, that you're opposing for?
Yeah. Madam Mayor, Senator Hall, this one is in our supportive role. I think what we're going to do is work with the League of Minnesota Cities and help provide examples. I believe, as Senator Carlson said, that they're working on some legislation, and so, as they do that, we'd -- the council has authorized us to help assist in that.
Yeah. Yeah.
Again, because this is something that I brought to the league, and I think others did, too. So, it's not unique to Burnsville.
Sure.
Yes. Councilmember.
Does it actually.
Senator.
Does it actually break your ordinance on operating a business in a non-business-zoned property?
Yes.
So, is there something that the city can do about it directly?
Well, Heather and Jenny.
Madam Senator, and actually, Jenny can also answer this, but I think the problem is that we have difficulty enforcing it.
Yes.
And what we have is it's very difficult to prove. You can kind of, you can watch these houses, but it takes an awful lot of staff, resources, but also, it's kind of, what is the remedy? And maybe Ms. Faulkner can help me out here.
The statute does not allow us to regulate daycares as home occupations. They're allowed outright in R-1. So, what we'd be asking for is a provision that says, unless it's occupied.
Byed.
By the owner of the daycare or something, because there's nobody living there. So, there is statutory exemption for daycares in residential areas.
Okay.
But does not delineate owner occupied.
Yes, that's correct.
In this part of it.
So, it's, again, a loophole that we need to close. I don't believe that was ever the intent.
Sure. Certainly, you're not really concerned about the zoning issue. You're concerned about the business.
The exemption and the statute for non-regulation opposed by cities.
Okay. Thanks. Ms. Johnston?
The next is a pretty straightforward one. Number five, related to levy limits. The city opposes state restrictions on local budgets and opposes legislation that imposes levy limits or the imposition of artificial mechanisms for or freezes of any natures. Number five, transportation. The city of Burnsville supports additional statewide transportation funding and local tools for long, short, and long-term needs. Specifically, the city supports the independence of opt-out transit service providers. Number six, creating and implementing local partnerships. The city supports the passage of legislation that encourages local service partnerships resulting in efficiencies and cost savings by providing state reimbursement of costs related to partnerships. This discussion came up when discussing the Dakota County Communication Center, where there were provisions, whether it was the state sales tax exemption, that clarifying that so that if you're working together with other entities, that they should also receive that kind of sales tax, so you don't put into place a disincentive for communities or organizations, nonprofit organizations, if you will, to work together. And also, just to note, we did, on places where the LMC has a position, we've noted that as well in the parenthetical on these different items, so. And this is one of those that we've also talked about with them. The next item, cable service providers. The city supports attracting multiple cable provisioned service providers to the city and also, while also preserving the city's control of the rights of its own, regulation of its own rights away, rights of way. The city believes that no case has been made for statewide franchising, and any statewide franchising that would limit the local revenue would severely impact our ability to make public meetings available for television viewing. This meeting, for example, is one of the types of activities that is funded by the cable franchise revenue.
And it allows us to be very transparent to our citizens. Our work sessions, our council meetings are all on television and on cable and on the Internet.
The next item, number eight, data retention for local law enforcement. The city supports the position to, that we be allowed to retain automated license plate reader data for a reasonable period of time for use in criminal investigations. Currently, the city of Burnsville, just to be clear, is not using this technology. And so, we just want to maintain that right in the event that that happens in the future. We do support the legislation that passed in 2014 that increased the time that we can maintain that data for 90 days, and we believe that that's, that we can work with that.
Yes, Senator.
That is a very controversial issue, trying to balance the ability of maintaining information for law enforcement and investigations and trying to separate out the public information and the private information. And also, the, you know, there may be different tiers. For instance, location of people who are not under investigation might be something that they'll want to discard earlier. And there's been that, the issue of giving it to outside people, which is the same as the photocop issue also, and that's, you know, who gets to keep this information? And then, there was the issue where the 180 days, does it restart if, for instance, Burnsville gives their information to Minneapolis? Does the 180 days restart each time it's transferred to another department? And I think the answer has been, we don't know. So, there's more discussion going to come from that in the next, probably.
And I think if you work with the chiefs, you can get some pretty good clarity on all of those questions.
Madam Mayor, Senator Carlson, absolutely. It's a complicated issue, you know, especially there's, as more people also use, start to use the photo technology, that's going to definitely be an issue that we'll be actively engaged in. Number nine is a new position, support for local services. And this is, this is related to some of the proposals that have come forward in the legislature over time, statutes that identify specific revenue mechanisms for a specific purpose. The city believes they should only be used for that purpose. For example, the fire safety account is one that provides funding for the state fire marshal's office and also regional response teams. However, a portion of that revenue has also been diverted to the state's general fund. And we just believe if there's, if it's raised for a specific purpose, that purpose should be what that revenue should go for.
Senator.
Madam Mayor, does the fire chief support this, too?
Yes. Matter of fact, I think he is one of the go-to people.
Yeah, I would think so. I think I've heard from him a few times.
Madam Mayor, members of legislative delegation and council, the next item is another new one. This is the alignment of responsibilities to agencies with expertise. And Senator Hall, you might note, our fire chief has also been engaged in this particular issue. This specifically is supporting the alignment of responsibilities from agencies with expertise or commissions in those responsibilities. This actually is broader. One of the examples in the fire world is with the state fire marshal's office and the Department of Labor. There are different pieces of regulation that's controlled by those two different individual departments. It also goes into some of the other areas, like, for example, the DNR and the PCA related to water regulation. It's very difficult for a local jurisdiction who, we want to obey the law. We absolutely do, and sometimes those laws conflict with each other, and that's when we have a little bit of problems. Or sometimes, you have something like the state fire marshal's office, who really has responsibility for fire prevention, but then, when you're trying to move something forward, it gets delayed in the Department of Labor, because they have just one piece of that. And our fire chief could certainly give you more of an explanation than that. But it generally has to do with conflicting or multiple agencies having jurisdiction over very similar types of activities. Number 11, primary service area. This has to do with our EMS. The first priority for the provision of emergency medical services should be, continue to be, the city's primary resources. And the city opposes any attempts to alter the PSA law that would permit healthcare organizations to have preferred providers within its, for transport or emergency care. The next item is the reimbursement for emergency medical services. This generally supports that we continue to have reimbursement at the national average cost rate and establishing a prudent layperson standard for the payment of ambulance claims and also streamlining regulations and making it easier for providers to file claims with Medicare.
Yeah. Representative Mason?
Do you have statistics on how difficult this is to achieve? Or what your past history has been, the reason that you're.
Madam Mayor, Representative Mason, I'm going to defer to our fire chief, B.J. Youngman, here.
Sure. Madam Mayor, Representative Mason, some of the examples are, I can tell you, on average, our ambulance bills are, as far as the reimbursement rate, are around $1,500, and the Medicare/Medicaid reimbursement rate is around $350.
Yeah.
And we're not able to capture the remaining portion of that bill. We have to write it off under the Medicare/Medicaid standards. And Center for Medicare/Medicaid, who sets the standards for the rest of the billing world, continues to change and continues to require things. I'll give you an example. Over the last year, now we have to run a check on all of our employees through their system to make sure that we don't employ anybody that they wouldn't allow as authorized representatives, or I forget the exact word, but if they're on their, if you will, do-not-fly list for Medicare/Medicaid, then we would be ineligible to get reimbursement from Medicare and Medicaid. So, there's many different regulations like this that we have to follow through Medicare and Medicaid in order to just qualify to bill them. I don't know if that answers your question exactly, but there's, it's a very complicated system.
But the bottom line is, you're only getting.
Yeah.
A very limited fraction.
Correct. Yeah. So, when you factor in, when you factor in the overall recovery rate, it's about 45 cents on the dollar when you add in private insurance to that. And about 60% of our patients are either Medicare or Medicaid patients in our city.
Thank you.
So, then, Madam Mayor, our taxes pick up the rack?
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
Oh, yes. Yes. Yeah, Senator.
From what I understand, Medicaid might be slightly different than Medicare, in that Medicaid is 50% funded by the state, so we may be able to get some, put some pressure there. But Medicare, we have no influence.
Yeah.
And from what I understand, the League of Minnesota Cities is making this a federal issue. They are asking for federal legislation to help with this.
Yeah, there are some things that we have to go to the federal government for, but we need the state and our legislators to also support when we go to the federal government with this. And we may have to have a conversation with Representative Klein and see what he can do to help us in that regard as well.
The next one is broadband priorities. The city of Burnsville supports the goals established in 2009 by the state's broadband task force to make the state of Minnesota leader in broadband access speed and capacity at a local level. Number 14, fiscal disparities. The city of Burnsville advocates for legislation that would reflect meaningful analysis. As we, as you know, the analysis has happened, but there weren't very many recommendations that came out of that study. Specifically, this, the city opposes the use of fiscal disparities to fund social or physical metropolitan programs because of its complexities. It results in a property tax increase that is hidden from the public. And the city of Burnsville believes in transparent funding of those types of programs.
Have you noticed we haven't put that on our priority, because it's such a big elephant to move?
Well, and it changes, Madam.
Yeah.
Mayor.
It does.
Keeps changing who gives and who gets.
Yeah.
So, that's a tough one.
Madam Mayor, Senator Hall, I thought you were going to ask me what our current contribution is that you did, that you have, and is $3.6 million, so we did make sure we looked that up for you.
Is that what it is now? 3.6?
Yeah.
Okay, which is down from what it was a few years ago.
Yeah, but just.
Still more than we.
Well, it's, you know, as things get better and our commercial industrial tax base goes up again.
Yeah. It's pretty consistent with what it's been. It's been growing a little bit.
Yeah, Eagan puts in a whole lot. Senator Carlson?
One of the payers.
Yes.
The next item, number 15, local government aid. The city supports continued funding of the VOS database and compilation of the data by the Department of Revenue. That concludes the supporting categories. Unless there are other questions on either the priorities or the supporting categories, I'll move into the monitoring and tracking position statements. Any other questions on those? Okay. The first item under monitoring and tracking is state property taxes. The city of Burnsville opposes the extension of state levied property taxes to additional classes of property.
If you realize that the state property tax is not as transparent.
Right.
Yeah. And people don't realize that the state takes a big portion of our commercial and industrial tax base. industrial tax base. So, you know, we just don't want it to get into the residential area that the state also starts to take money from that base.
Is that?
Yes, Senator.
Mayor, is that transparent at all to the property owner, the commercial industrial property owner?
No.
They see an itemized amount that they're contributing?
You know, I, they do see it, but they don't realize where that, it goes to the state, it's about 33%, what is it?
I believe that's, Madam Mayor, Senator Carlson, I believe it's about, that might be a little bit more than that, I don't know if you remember Dana, but it is, but it is itemized, it does say that it goes to the state, and it does say Dakota County, I think, generally speaking, when folks are looking at their property taxes, they generally look at the bottom line and, and attribute it to the local municipality, I think, is, is the mayor's point.
And I guess, maybe just ask it a different way, you don't put that into your budget as a budget item, that you have to collect it and then reimburse it?
No.
No, no.
No, Madam Mayor, Senator Carlson, that is all distributed through the Department of Revenue, as you know, so, yeah. The next item is transportation topic, the two topics that we're continuing to monitor have to do with maintenance, the city would like MinDOT to meet the property maintenance standards that are adopted by cities in their own local jurisdictions, the second item is the street improvement district, the city of Burnsville supports legislation that would allow cities to have a street improvement district, if they do so through a transparent and public process to, to create those districts.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Mary.
This is something that I have had great concern about, because, let's talk about Highway 13, it's essentially about Highway 13, it is mowed twice a year if we're lucky, this year wasn't, it was mowed.
One.
One and a half times, they mowed half of it twice, the other half they only mowed once, it is so bad that we have real estate people who say when they are, they pick somebody up at the airport and they want to show properties in this area, they do not drive them down Highway 13, they come up Cedar, get up on 42, so to avoid that look of Highway 13, it looks, it's, and, and we're not the only community, at LMC meetings, I've heard cries from these little tiny communities who have very little budget, and they might have two, two state highways going through there, you know, intersecting the town, it's never mowed, and they don't have the money to do it, nor do we, but I think the second part of this is, if we could, if we could get an allowance to do that, we would do it.
You don't want that to be part of your street improvement district though, do you?
No.
Yeah, I mean, the reason, I'm kind of familiar with that, you know, that, back in the 50s, that my father had the contract to mow for Dakota.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
From West St. Paul to Savage.
Now, you don't, they don't have that anymore.
They don't have that anymore.
Yeah. Yeah, but it is a, it's a real detriment when you talk about economic development, and you know our community, we really, that Highway 13 corridor is extremely important to our economy here, and it, it just is, it's an embarrassment.
It is, and it has to do with image and how we market our city, I know when UTC, when it was Goodrich and the previous president, and I'm meeting with the new one coming up here, but they would say they're going to have 30 or 40 people coming from around the world, that, that facility brings in people from all over the world, and you have some of those companies in Eagan, when they come, they do not want to come down 13, because they want a great visual appeal into the city that they are located in, as they travel from the airport and going to the, their business facility, it's about image, yes.
Now, not to belabor too much, but that, that has been a county responsibility, is that correct?
No.
State.
The state, it's Highway 13 is a state highway.
Okay.
42 is county, and usually, if we know that they're going to, I make sure that the county knows to mow it if they've got a whole lot of people coming through.
Okay, and the second part of that question is that, and we don't want to have that mixed up with the street, street improvement district.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I misspoke on it, yeah.
But we are, I'm going to carry that bill again.
Okay.
And we will need to get a House sponsor also, but we're going to change it just slightly to be, try to mimic exactly the Bloomington, they're, you know, they were able to pass it because they're a charter city, so what we're going to do is, we're trying to make this so that it's, it looks just like a charter city, to put that into the.
That would be helpful.
Yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Madam Mayor, members of the council and legislative delegation, the next item is a new item, related to the effective delivery of local government services, the city advocates the statutes to not limit the ability of local governments to provide services in the most effective way possible, we in the city of Burnsville, we pride ourselves in, in trying to deliver services in the most efficient and effective way possible, this is kind of a defensive position in that we'd like, like if you're telling us what to do, tell us what to do, but not how to do it, one specific example of this is there was some legislation about prohibiting the use of fire stops, now we've done great outreach in our multifamily housing units, related in getting those, in, in teaching, we've had videos in, for our Somali, Somali community about the use of these fire stops, and it's, we've had some great stories, which I'm sure Chief Youngman would, would come up here for half an hour and tell you these stories, and those are the types of things, those kinds of prohibition against using something that we found very effective, that we would like to not have.
Senator Hall, did you have a question?
No, I'm, I was laughing at the chief back there, as, as we were looking at each other.
Give us the permission, and we know how to deliver it.
Yeah, we know that, and you do a good job.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The number, number four, reseller legislation, the city of Burnsville opposes legislation that would restrict the ability of police to access reseller customer data and property information. Number five, this is the photocop, which Senator Carlson mentioned earlier, that city should be allowed to enforce traffic laws and promote public safety through the use of photo enforcement technology, in a fashion that is both constitutional and is effective in citing traffic lawbreakers, now, again, we don't have this technology, we're not currently using this in the city of Burnsville, just support that, that it's available to law enforcement agencies. The, number six, Public Employees Retirement Association, PERA, we continue to support, the city of Burnsville continues to support the sharing, cost sharing for these retirement programs, however, we're concerned, as many jurisdictions are, about the ever increasing cost of the pension program, we advocate that if the benefit, level of benefits change, that those changes are funded by the state. The next item, PERA, or Public Employee Labor Relations Act arbitrations, the city opposes any changes that would reduce its ability to manage its workforce in a manner that balances available resources with the effective provision of services. Number eight, private well drilling, the city of Burnsville supports current law that authorizes cities to protect public health and safety through local controls regulating or prohibiting private wells being placed within, within its current boundaries.
Yeah, Representative Mason. Do you have many examples of this happening right now, or, I'm thinking it's probably rare in this day and age, but.
Madam Mayor, Representative Mason, our public works director, Steve Albrecht, I'll give you a couple of examples.
The issue that we struggle with is, as the economy slowed down, the well drilling companies would come to an apartment complex, for example, and say, we can save you money, you don't have to be hooked up to the city system and take their water anymore, you can drill your own well, right in the middle of Burnsville, that's problematic for the city in that we built the infrastructure, we provide the fire protection for that facility, if they disconnect and don't take water from us, our only means of collecting fees is through their water use revenues, and so, the Department of Health and the DNR and the League of Minnesota Cities worked out that the cities in areas where water is available, public water, we've invested in the infrastructure, we can control whether wells can be placed in that area or not, and we probably have two to three companies a year try to put private wells in to take large segments of the city off of the public system, even though we would still have to provide the fire protection and other things, just so that they can skirt having to pay city water rates for their water, so it is something that's a kind of an ongoing battle, the current legislation is very effective, and there isn't an issue with it, but there have been attempts in the past by the private well drilling industry to get that changed, that wouldn't allow cities to control where wells could be within the city.
Mr. Albrecht, isn't that also an issue when we're trying to protect the aquifers?
Very much so, one of the easiest ways to pollute our groundwater is to have wells that are unregulated and, and uncared for, and so, our goal is to reduce the number of private wells into our aquifers as we do, so there is a, there is a secondary issue to it, too.
And for the long-term use of, of the aquifer, we need to make sure that we are being good stewards of that very precious resource, not just for today, but for our, you know, grandchildren and our great-grandchildren, so that they have this precious resource, if we have everybody drilling wells, there is a public health issue, there is an issue about that natural resource being depleted, I mean, we've had, we, we have a great model in recharging the Jordan Aquifer, because we're sharing water through using of surface water with the city of Savage, and it's a model that people are, are talking about that we should continue to do, so, that's, that's another big issue, yes, Senator.
Madam Mayor, I guess I'm a little bit confused, I'm trying to figure out exactly how these people are expecting to get away with putting in a well, I would imagine that you need a permit to do it, plus then you don't have sewage collection, utility collections.
These are, these are, for example, it would be an apartment building that already has sewage connection, so they're not proposing to disconnect their sewage, what they're proposing to do is not use water from the public system, thereby not having to pay water rates and drill a well, their contention is that the cities do not have regulatory authority, the DNR has regulatory authority over water appropriations, and as long as they don't, the DNR has never gotten into the realm of telling people whether or not they can have a well, as long as it doesn't pose an impact to another existing well from a pumping standpoint, and so, they, it's very easy to get an appropriations permit, that's not the issue for them, and so, the cities had to step in and assert their zoning authority and say, well, we do not get to control how a well is constructed, or how much can be drawn from it, we can control where they are placed, so as not to impact the public infrastructure that's in place and paid for by the taxpayers.
So, Mary?
I think you, so theoretically, this could also be done in Minneapolis and St. Paul.
Can be done anywhere, basically.
Madam, Madam Mayor. Can wells be pounded in by, you know, homeowner, or do they have to have, if they were to be done, I mean, could you do it yourself?
Well, they hire, well, they hire a company to do a well, they don't, the wells you're talking about in the past, they, people could do sandpoint wells around lakes and such, people do a shallow well that they can take water for irrigation.
Right.
Prior lake, for example, they can take water out of the lake to irrigate, if you're under a certain amount of gallons per day, you can do that without any permits from the state of Minnesota, so, the only regulations we have is the authority to allow whether a well is placed or not, so, and we do have, we do allow private wells in the city, we're, when city water is not available, that's the option that's available, and we support that option, it's just when city water and the infrastructure has been placed and been used by the property, for them to decide at some point, wait, we can get it cheaper if we drill our own well and not have to pay for it, yet the city, it's not, we don't get to take the infrastructure back, we still have to provide fire protection, and we still have to pay for the infrastructure that's there, so, that's, that's the issue, and the current legislation is adequate and sufficient, and so, this is really a monitoring position, because for a period of years, the well drilling companies attempted to get this overturned.
Sure, okay, thank you.
So be aware, they're going to be lobbying.
Sure.
Yeah, yeah, Senator Carlson.
Madam Mayor, I haven't heard anything about this, you know, about any changes proposed.
It's been about two years since they've, since they've started discussing it.
For instance, I wonder, are your service, are your sewage service fees based on your water usage?
Sewer service fees are based on your winter water usage, so, they aren't spiked in the summer by irrigation or uses like that, so, we set them based on your, what we'd call your three winter months, because we don't have meters on your sewage that runs through, so we know how much water goes into your house, we average out your three winter months, and that's what you pay for the summer as an estimated sewer cost, so that doesn't reflect people watering their lawns, which doesn't go into the sewer, so they shouldn't pay for that.
So, Madam Mayor, Mr. Albrecht, that doesn't reflect then somebody filling up their pool?
But we, no, it doesn't, and that, and that's part of like summer irrigation use, so that's why we use typically that December, January, February months, because you're not going to be filling a pool, you're not going to be irrigating outside, so you're not going to have an artificially high water use, that's pretty standard, cities all have a slight variation of that method typically, it's basically a credit to residents to not penalize them for summer water use.
Yeah.
Councilmember Sherry.
Well, do, I'll follow up on Senator Carlson's question, just to, from my understanding, so, if somebody were to drill a well for an apartment building, for example, how would we charge them for the sewer usage?
We could, we, we couldn't, we'd have to estimate, it would have to be estimated, we do have the rare home that has a well still from the 60s, say, that is on public sewer, that you do an estimated sewage, based on the number of people in the, in the property.
Okay.
If you remember, down in southwest Burnsville, we also have.
I know there are wells down there.
Yeah, they have wells, but they also have a.
Well, some have septic.
Septic system, so that they're not in, but they have to have two, it's a minimum of two acres, correct, to have, to have those services.
We have a stray home or two that still has a well and is on sewer, and, and vice versa, so there are still a few on the outer edges of the city limits, where only one utility has been extended at this time.
Okay, thanks.
Does the Public Health Department also issue a permit?
Just for the, the, how the well is constructed, they have no concern over where it is placed, or, again, there's multiple, this gets into our whole multiple agency conversation, you have many.
That's where I'm going with this, if you have the, the Department of Natural Resources issuing a permit, and you have Public Health issuing a permit, we need to understand how they're both regulating that, and, and how they're going to issue, and that's to the previous issue that is on our legislative agenda, it's how all these departments write up their, their policies and regulate.
Madam Mayor, members of the council and members of legislative delegation, the last item on our agenda is the aggregate mining fee, the city of Burnsville advocates state establishment of a host community fee at a level mutually, mutually agreeable to aggregate producers and local governments, consistent with the impact that these types of activities, as you know, we have a limestone quarry in the city of Burnsville, and it has a large impact on us from an economic development, but also from a, an infrastructure standpoint, so.
Any questions, any other questions about our priorities, what we're supporting and what we're monitoring, yes, Senator Carlson.
Madam Mayor, and Ms. Johnson, what would you suggest as being the way to collect that mining fee?
Madam Mayor, Senator Carlson, this is, for example, we have a host community fee right now with our garbage industries, and so, there would be a similar type of mechanism that would be, that could be put in place for this type of activity.
Okay, and would you dedicate that to a particular use?
Madam Mayor, Senator Carlson, we haven't had that discussion with the council at this point in time, so that would certainly be a conversation that we would have at that point.
Okay.
So, if it's something that, that is going to bubble up to the top, I think that's, once we know that if it has legs, whether it's short legs or long legs, you know, we can have that discussion, right now, we just are saying this is something that is, is needed, we have it with the, with Refuge, we are a landfill host, and we're also a mining host. So, okay, Senator Carlson.
If you're opening up two questions now.
Yes, please.
I have one that I'd like to, and I won't put you on the spot, but I want you to think about it, what's the city position on alcohol on Sunday and beer on Sunday, and also, I'm tending to think that I would like to have it, you know, I'd like the legislature to kind of back out of it, to allow the cities to determine for themselves.
Well, I can tell you, we haven't had that discussion, but if you're going to push that to our level, now you're making it a fight between municipalities, I would think that it should be a statewide issue, rather than a city-by-city issue, that's just me personally, and if we're going to go down that road to look at alcohol sales on Sunday, then I would, like we do here in Burnsville, we always engage our owners of those, of those retailers in the discussion, and, because it's, it's theirs, the same thing like car dealers, and the, whether you buy cars on Sunday or not, I think they're the ones who need to say whether they want that or not, and I know it's all over the board, and that's why the Beverage, Beverage Association can't seem to, because they're all over the board, they have to come together, now, I'm going to go to.
Want to go around the table?
Absolutely, because, I mean, all of us, I'll, I'll go to, I'll go to Councilmember Keely. Keely, then Councilmember Wynn, and Councilmember Sherry, and Councilmember Cofflin.
Glad you brought it up, Senator. I lived down in St. Louis when the Blue laws were repealed, and I don't think anyone down there is looking back and going, geez, I wish these stores were closed on Sunday so I could not have to shop, or the business owners would get the, you know, legislative mandated day off. I am all for sales on Sunday, always have been. I come from Wisconsin, which, that's where most of our business is going. I'd like to see our business stay in Minnesota instead of farming it out to our neighboring states. And I, I, I'm hoping that this year it gets done at the state level.
Well, I have to agree with you, Madam Mayor, that I would like to hear from the folks who own these establishments in our city to see what their position is on that and how they feel about it.
Because it's not, not a big, I mean, it's not going to impact us as a city. We don't make any taxes from it. It's, you know, it's, it's retail. So for me, it's, we talk to them because they're the ones, it's their business. And I know you struggle with that.
Well, and if it was passed at the state level, would folks who own these establishments, they can decide to open or to not open?
Yeah. Yeah. But don't push it down to us.
No.
I, I agree. I, I think that the business owners are the only ones with dogs in this fight.
Yeah.
I agree with Dan on this. And if it came to the, I, I hope the state decides that I'm totally for operating and being open on Sunday. For me, it's a, it's not a hard issue at all. And then if it came to the city, that's how I'd vote.
Madam Mayor, just one follow-up. If you watch our council meeting concerning our liquor ordinance, you would get a pretty good sense as to where our council position is on free-market principles.
And for us, if, for me, it's Councilmember Sherry, Councilmember Wynn and myself, if you decide to do, I just say, don't push it down to us. You make the decision. Then our liquor store owners can decide whether they want to open or close. Same thing with cars. They can decide whether they want to open and sell cars on Sunday or not open and sell cars on Sunday. Yeah. But don't, don't push that decision down to us. That's all I'm saying.
Madam Mayor, I think if we, if we copped out and pushed it down to you, it would pass. And that would be the reason that they're trying, some are trying to do that, to get it to pass.
Yes, I know. We know the game. We know the game. The game is, we don't want to make the decision, so let's make the cities make the decision.
And I don't think you should have to. That's all I'm saying.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes, Councilmember Sherry?
It's a state law now, correct?
Yeah, it is.
So if it's to be changed, it would be changed by the state?
Yeah.
No.
It would be a repeal of the Blue Law by the state. So it would suddenly turn it into the same as gas stations and everyone else, that they can determine their own hours. Now, the balance that we have is the big-box stores, they all love it because they have the infrastructure, they have the, the advertising, all of that. The mom-and-pops, they're saying that, and this, this is why I am concerned, because we don't want to drive these people out of business. This is where all of their wealth has been invested. This is everything to them. And what they say is, we're going to get six days of sales over seven. And it's going to cost us another day of managing the store. Plus, they have to pay dram shop insurance for Sunday, which I never realized until I got into it a little bit more.
And minimum wage. That's now-
But that's, but their, their big issue is that, you know, is it going to increase my sales enough to pay off that extra day of insurance and keeping the doors open and, or maybe me working seven days a week?
Yeah.
And then the, the issue between municipalities is Stillwater wants it, Duluth wants it, Fargo wants, I mean, not Fargo, Warhead wants it. All of those border towns want it. And as far as I'm concerned, you know, I, I agree that the free market should take care of it. Then we have cities that have municipal stores, and they generally have not wanted it. We have people that have the small bottle shops-
Yes.
And they generally don't want it. And I think that's where the Licensed Beverage Association is coming down with them.
And, and you know, all I'm saying to you, Senator, make the decision at your level.
Okay.
Don't push it down to us.
Okay. And that's the right input. Because if you would have said the exact opposite, we want to decide, or we want it, we want it open, let us decide.
No.
I'd be fine with that.
No.
I just want to make it clear. I'm saying that if you push it down to us, that's where I decided. I'm not, it's whatever you guys decide. Now, the majority disagrees with that.
No, not necessarily.
Not necessarily. I'm saying, don't push your responsibility down to us. I'm saying, make the decision so that it's, it's, it's consistent throughout the whole state.
Right. But I'm saying I'm open either way. That if they do, then they do.
Don't cop out.
Most of us deal with, you know, one to four cities, something like that. And that's what I want to do, is get the opinion of the cities because I'm open to really any decision.
Yeah. We get nothing from it. As Councilmember Sherry says, it's not a, we, we don't have a dog. We don't get any sales tax or anything on any of that. But I think it's, it's up to our liquor store owners. And actually, it should be a law that is consistent throughout the state and not by municipality, by municipality. So make the decision at your level. Councilmember Keely?
I agree. And there are some things on this legislative agenda that, you know, we're asking for local control. It makes sense to have local control. This is one that is truly better off at the state level. But if you throw it to us, we'll be happy to tackle it.
Okay. No, I'm saying you guys don't cop out.
We'll, we'll pass it just fine.
Okay. So on the priorities, and I think, Senator Hall, I think because you are in the majority, will you be able to, to carry our property-
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Senator?
I would really like to have been in the majority, but I'm not.
Yes.
And so Senator Carlson, because he's in there-
And you can support this.
I will absolutely support it.
Yes.
And then with Roz or Drew, I think either one of them being the majority, only because they're in the majority, you want to work.
Yes.
And probably best for them.
Yeah, you've been there, Dan.
Yes. And, and Council, and Representative Mason, you could support that. So it'll be a nice bipartisan bill to go through. So I thank you very much. Thank you. So anything else on the priority? Somebody is really wanting to carry?
On a priority?
Yeah, on the priority. Yes.
The five?
Yeah, the five that we have, the first five. Yes. Representative Mason?
I definitely would like to work on the metropolitan governance one. As I said, I am already working on it. So.
Wonderful. So.
And I carried the bill for that last year.
Yeah. And you're going to, yeah, because you worked on it six years ago or something. Yeah. Well, I remember going to all those meetings.
Yeah.
Yeah. So.
So, Madam Mayor, probably the big one that we're going to be all facing is a transportation bill.
Yes.
And the county has been asking for it. And, you know, and I see you're looking for more funding. And also, we do have the street maintenance bill. All of that deals with transportation and the, whatever it is, the number for half a million miles of lane miles of roadway that we have in the, in the state. And this is going to be probably the year where, well, this is going to be introduced. And what we need is, we need, you know, broad support for that so that we can get it through. We, you know, we got something through once before, and that was very painful. It, in 2008, we had to override the governor. And at this point, I think a lot of things that our communities here have had, we wouldn't be, wouldn't have been opening up the Highway 513 bridge at that time. We probably would have gotten the money eventually, but I think it was 16 million dollars.
Would have been even more expensive than what we ended up with.
That's right. We opened up the Apple Valley Transit Center, the Lakeville Transit Center, the Eagan Transit Center. All of those were related to that 2008 override for transit. And there's just multiple other projects that we had that were roadways. So the, the likelihood is, because we have such a deficit in the requests versus the, the revenue that we can collect, that we will be, we will be introducing a transportation bill. And Representative Dowd, who's the speaker, he has not taken it off the table. So we think that there's something can go through the House also. I've asked the question, if anyone has signed the no taxes pledge, and if they regard that as a new tax, just like they've been regarding the street maintenance bill as a new tax. And I haven't gotten any, any particular resistance yet.
And I'm going to be talking to the council tonight. We had Commissioner Zelli at the Regional Council of Mayors. And in his report for what's going on, remember there's going to be the reconstruction of the bridge, the 35 bridge over the Minnesota River. So he has in his budget for this year's 5.5 million for design. And there'll be some federal fund that has to come into that. But as we all know, the federal transportation funds have been on continuous resolution for how many years?
Yep.
A lot of years. That's right. So we need to make sure, because that's going to be constructed. It's, it needs to be done. And it needs to be a safe bridge. It carries a lot of traffic. So it's slated for 2019, but 18 is what he's sort of pinpointing. But the design is for this, this, the 15, the design work. And there's 5.5 in that. So we do need to get-
Madam Mayor, and if I could ask Senator Carlson, are you referring to a gas tax then? Is that what you're talking about?
Yep.
Because, you know, I, I agree that certainly roads and bridges need something, but another tax when we have a billion-dollar surplus kind of surprises me. And so I would probably be opposing any kind of a tax when you've got a billion-dollar surplus.
Well, you all, you all work very hard on this issue at the, at the state legislature because it needs to be done. We have a lot of need in terms of transportation, funding and transit. So, and if there's anything we can do, we'll be happy to help. And-
And that's a priority to us.
Yeah. Very good.
And we have some governance issues that are meddling with transportation. Item number four on our priorities has a little impact on item five, transportation, when it relates to the opt-outs and the Met Council's oversight of the opt-outs, funding stream, etc.
And that's why Representative Mason is stepping up to carry this again. And so it's because it has some really direct impacts to those of us south of the river with our, our transit. So we need, yes.
One thing I must do when we talk about the surplus, the surplus is not in the bank.
No, we know.
There is nothing in the bank.
It's just on paper and projections.
And that surplus, the billion dollars that was referred to, and, you know, I was depressed last Thursday when it was announced because I, you know, we, the two caucuses get their briefing on it. I went back to my office and listened to the news at 11 o'clock, and KSTP said they just announced a $1 billion surplus. And, you know, and then they talked about how the money will be spent. But we always have to remember, that billion dollars is at, on June 30th of 2017.
Yeah.
Anything, cannon will happen between now and then. And in fact, the, even the, the forecast is looking at, you know, it is flattening out a little, but it still gives us billion dollars. And that's roughly $373 million from this biennium on a $40 billion, $41 billion budget. So it's, it's the hair on the tail of the dog, really. And that can go away really quickly. And a lot of that came from income and sales tax collections. And a lot of that comes from the stock market that's been doing record numbers this year. So people are taking their profits. And in Minnesota, you pay ordinary income tax on capital gains. So there's a lot of things that, you know, we, we need to be really careful of. We, you know, the last thing we can do is say, let's spend it. Because it, it may not be there. But-
Representative Mason?
Just one more point. We need to be doing something on transportation, no question. But what the, the problem is trying to come up with stable funding and just dealing with the surplus is not going to do it. And what I keep telling people is MnDOT is 40, in some cases, 20, at least 20 years behind in most of its projects. So this has been kicked around for a lot of years. We need to do better, much better. But we also need to be thinking about what else, where we're going to get the money from. Because the other thing that's happening now is there's a lot of change in transportation. On our roads, for instance, right now, we're making bike lanes. Well, if bicycles are going to use that, we also might want to think about, maybe we need to be licensing bicycles because they are now using our roads.
And expanding the roads.
And, and, you know, there's a whole lot of, and we're doing more with transit. We're doing a lot of different things. And while I'm, the gas tax, at least, that is a dedicated tax, so I'm comfortable with that. But it's losing its efficiency. So we need to be looking for other ways to pay for the transportation. But it's, to me, it's, it's a life and death matter because there are so many people that are dying on roads that we are not fixing appropriately, and our population is growing.
Okay, I'm going to go to Councilmember Sherry.
I certainly hear you. And I, but I also hope you'll find, you'll follow the lead of, of the, the cities as we did. And that is, when we had to fund basic things, we found, we cut some of the, we cut some of the, the projects that were, we had to choose between the real needs versus what we wanted. And I, I don't think the state has really gone there yet. I think that we, you, you really need to take a hard look at wants versus needs. And I, my feeling is, roads are just a very basic priority of what government can do. Government can not fill everybody's wants. And I, I think that it's time to pull back and start asking those questions.
Okay. Any other, Councilmember Keely?
Can't say it any better than that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Cofflin?
I couldn't say any better than that as well. So unless we're going to really get into a discussion, what I don't think is proper for this forum.
Yeah, I don't think so. And it's time, and, and we need to let them go also. Yes, Senator Hall?
I just say it's a pleasure to be a part of this community. You and the council do a really good job.
Thank you.
And I appreciate it. The police and fire, well, the police are really good, but the fire, you know, with the guys in the room. And, and your staff has been really good to work with.
Yeah, be careful Friday, they'll get you, you know.
That's for sure. So thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for coming. We appreciate your being here. And congratulations for being elected and re-elected. Representative Drew, you're going to, it's a steep learning curve.
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor, for, for inviting all of us. I think we really appreciated hearing your priorities. Sometimes it's unclear what some of our constituents' priorities are. So we, I think we really value forums like this and, and, and an agenda like this that makes it really clear, your priorities. So thank you.
You're very welcome. If you need anything, our staff stands ready to be supportive, to give you information. As you see in the, in the agenda, we have the name of each staff member for you to contact if you have questions. Okay. Anything else? Ms. Johnston?
Nothing.
Thank you so much for coming. We appreciate your being here with us, and we look forward to working with you during the legislative session.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks.
We're going to continue to move on. So we stay on target. The next item on our agenda is the Fire Department Public Access AED Registry. And we have our chief and our deputy chief with us who is, who are going to be presenting. Chief Youngman?
Senator Hall, you're welcome to stay and listen to our first.
Yeah, if you want to, if you want to hear about, if you want to hear about the party. Yeah, if you want to, if you want to hear about, if you want to hear about the party.
Oh, is that for...
Madam Mayor, did we forget to tell Representative Christensen that as the rookie, he's supposed to sign on to every bill?
Oh, yeah.
He said a little fine of them.
Yeah. Did we find it?
No, but that's right.
No, no, it's...
Senator Hall, I'll bring it to you Friday.
Did we find it? The chief will bring it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, Assistant Chief Ritchie and I would like to thank you for your time. And we'd like to just take a couple of minutes and provide you with some information regarding a statute that was passed at the state in the last legislative session. And it regards automated external defibrillators, also known as AEDs, and some requirements along with those. So, there's no action needed, but we thought it would be good information because there, some cities are taking some action on this. And we believe that we have all the necessary pieces in place to do what we need. So, a little bit about AEDs is they're used for sudden cardiac arrest victims. They've become more commonplace, you know, over the past 10 years. You see them in airplanes, you see them at malls, you see them pretty much anywhere you go right now. And it's a very important piece of the response system to have these AEDs available. And the reason that the statute was passed is what we were finding is across the nation, these AEDs weren't being maintained. Similar to what we see with fire extinguishers and other things is people put them on the wall and then forget about them. And then when they need them, the batteries are dead, or they don't have the patches that they need, things of that nature. So, these are, these are items that need to be maintained in order to be ready and available in the event the emergency occurs. So, that was the reason for the statutes. And these AEDs have become much simpler to use and walk you right through the process. And anyone can own them. A few years ago, probably about five years ago, a statute was passed. You used to have to have essentially a prescription or a physician authorization to buy these. And as of recent years, you no longer need that. So, anybody can buy an AED from a vendor. As you can see, this is the chances of survival from cardiac arrest. And we've been pushing CPR for a number of years. But the other important component is defibrillation. And that's what the AEDs provide, is the CPR essentially pumps the blood around and keeps oxygen going to the brain and the heart so that we are able to defibrillate them and revive them. Unlike a lot of the TV shows, you actually need the defibrillation 99.9% of the time to revive someone. So, that AED provides that. And if we can get the defibrillation there within a minute, that's 90% chance of survival. And then, as you can see, as time goes on, that goes down to essentially 10% at 10 minutes. So, it's important that we get that there quick. And although we have a fast response system, it still takes time to process that call and get people there. So, if we can have public access AEDs, that's very important. So, in August 2004, the AED registry was required, and enforcement law was also passed. So, what this does is it allows cities or local municipalities to enforce, similar to the fire code, the AEDs to be maintained. It also requires that AED owners register their AEDs on a registry. There's a number of free registry sites. The nice thing about the registry sites is that they provide contact to these owners and remind them every year to check their batteries, to check their patches. So, we think that that's a great way of make sure, make sure these are maintained. This does not apply to the AEDs in public safety vehicles. This does not apply to AEDs that are only for staff use at places. This is only for public access AEDs. In Burnsville, Fire Department and our Mobile Volunteer Network, we've been working to train nearly 6,000 citizens, 10% of our population, in CPR. And we're slowly achieving that goal, but it is a lot of work. And we've had a lot of success with a lot of our partners in the community. The city of Burnsville also owns four public access AEDs. We have two at the ICE Center, one at City Hall, and one at the golf course that would qualify under this statute that will make sure get registered. And like I said, police and fire department vehicles carry AEDs, but that's only for response purpose, so they don't fall underneath the statute. One of the studies said that they attributed 1,150 deaths due to AED failures over the last 15 years. So, again, it happens often enough that if we can help prevent that on, just by some education, we think that's important. The other thing is it allows public safety agencies, such as ourselves, to inspect these AEDs and remove them if they, if they're not available for immediate use. And our city attorney, Joel Jamnik, believed that we could get to that without the fire code, without having to amend any city ordinance. And our goal through this is to be educational and not enforcement. We think if someone was courteous enough to spend the money and want to put the AED up, that they're going to want that to be in working order because they're not required to have these AEDs, unlike fire extinguishers and other pieces of equipment. So, we, we truly believe that it's going to be an educational process, and it won't really, we'll have very few, if any, cases of where we'll need to take any enforcement action on this. There's also no civil liabilities. They're covered under the Good Samaritan law if they use AEDs. Because I know that's a question that comes up a lot of times, is what if I do it wrong? Or what if I don't apply it correctly? The Good Samaritan law applies to civilians that use AEDs. And so, like I said, there's no necessary action from the council. We just wanted you to be aware of this law because some cities are adopting that statute into their city code. Again, we don't believe from our city attorney's perspective that we need to do that. And we think it's more educational, and we think it's important that people know to get their AEDs registered. And we're trying to reach out the best we can through Marty in Communications to have these people notify that they need to get their AEDs registered. So, with that, I would stand for any questions.
Any question? Sounds great.
I'm glad to know there's two here.
Yeah. Yeah, one here, two at the ICE Center.
Oh, two at the ICE Center.
Yes, we do need one over at the AIM Center, I would think, with a lot of people going in and out of that facility.
I think we have one there.
I think there is one there.
So, we have five.
We will confirm that.
I'll double-check.
Okay.
But I thought we had one. I just, yeah, I'll double-check.
Great.
I thought it was by the office.
Ms. Johnson?
Madam Mayor, as the chief said, there's also, we do have an aggressive goal in terms of training for the CPR. And so, if people, if people listening are interested in getting that training, they can contact the Fire Department. And we can set up a class. So, if there's a business who thinks that would benefit from that, we'd be happy to do that and come out to their location and do that kind of training. We think this is a really important effort that we've gotten some grant funds to work on. And so, just wanted to put that little plug in for our Fire Department, who does a great job with this training.
And Madam Mayor and council, it's about a 45-minute class. It's really, it's a quick class, and it covers the AED, covers the CPR. It's a really great class.
I went through it.
Yeah.
It's really not bad. I get you. Yeah. So, I think when we first received them, and it was right here that I went through it, it was, so, I think I need a refresher, though.
We can sign you.
Yeah, okay. But I think that's a great idea, maybe, but we don't have another bulletin going out until first quarter, right?
Right, we have the winter bulletin going out. But, but we can certainly, we just want to use this time as well as any other time to promote that we're available to help get people trained.
Great, good information. Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. And thank you for all that you do.
Thank you.
Please extend that to the rest of our fire personnel.
Will do. Thank you.
The next item is our Code Enforcement and Rental License Overview. And our Community Development Director, Ms. Faulkner, is presenting this evening along with our Licensing and Code Enforcement Coordinator, Mr. Chris Forsland. So, welcome, Forsland, and welcome.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I think we've got the PowerPoint up and running now. This item is more informational. We've had these programs up and running for two years. We just wanted to spend some time with you and let you know where we're at, some of the challenges that we've seen, some of the improvements that we've made. And then we have a couple of questions for you at the end that were noted in the background. With that, you've all met Chris Forsland by now, and so, I'm turning this over to him. He's our expert in this area, so.
And thank you for all the successes that you've done, and very well done. So, thank you for you and, to you and your team.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council. First off, happy holidays. And what I would like to do is, as Jenny mentioned, is just give a brief overview of our successes, our challenges, and perhaps more direction on where we need to go with the program. So, what we'd like to do is start out a little bit, this one here, with talking a little bit about our milestones. In 2012, when the program initiative was started by this council, we were handed quite a task to come up with, moving it forward, having a plan of attack, literally to take what was a complaint-based program and create one that was operationally effective and successful. One of which I think is important to note, or we had to train and equip and organize our staff. That's no small undertaking in itself right there. And what we had to take a look at, we had roughly the scope of the picture. We're looking at close to, you know, right now, nearly 10,000 individual rental units that require to be inspected. And we had to be prepared to do that by having qualified staff. During that time, we have inspected, literally, and I'll say inspect and re-inspect, sometimes more times than we choose to, thousands of these rental units. And it does add up. During that timeframe, we also developed some of our enforcement protocols and policies to make that effective. And that's partially what we want to talk about, is our results tonight a little bit. Since that time period too, we've also cross-trained staff, we found, and we'll go into this a little more detail, to recognize different enforcement codes. Our rental inspectors have to cover a broad, a broad variety of different codes, whether it be building codes, fire codes, housing codes. They may not be experts in area, but they certainly recognize the hazards. We've had to manage some staff turnover, primarily with some folks who have, well, one in particular had long-term status, Mr. Anderson, in, that we had to pick some slack up with and, and make sure we could handle complaints as they came in. As well as what I really have been really happy with is working successfully with other departments, to fire, police, utilities, all these different organizations within the city. So, we have a cohesive force to address a lot of these concerns. We've also integrated our cost recovery programs for reinspection fees, even some of our costs to do abatements along that line. And I, what I'm happy to say too, is we increased our response time to complaints. So, we're getting results, as the citizens, we're getting back to them in a timely fashion. So, those were some milestones I thought were important. And I'm just going to do a brief overview here because unless you see this every day, you may not recognize exactly what we have going on. This is a common occurrence. A lot of these, what we're seeing here, maybe are primarily rentals because we're in them, we're inside a structure, from electrical hazards such as, well, you can see the nest of power coming off the surge strips. And I wish, wish the Fire Department was here right now, they can certainly support...
They're all quitting out the fire now, they just...
Yeah, that would be it. They would certainly support the, how this does cause fires. With our department, we do, you know, we're proactive. We see these things before they hit the news, before the Fire Department has to roll. We see things just unknowing too. This, the load center on the, right there, we couldn't find it as part of our inspection process, and the homeowner was nice enough to take the panels off. Really important on a fire call when you've got firefighters working with water and energized system. So...
You had to take the panels off to get to the...
Yeah, we had to find it.
Box?
They don't like to look at them. These are, these are common things that we see when we go into some of our rental structures. And certainly, it's a risk to, to the occupants when they had to shut the power off, or our first responders who are not familiar. And I always tell staff, envision a room half-filled with smoke. You know, they're not going to be able to find these things on a good day. So, anything we can do to certainly make it easier for them, the better, for occupants. But these are just some general examples I'm going to go through. This was a live box as well, wide open, in a laundry area. You can see the plumbing there. These are, you know, these are houses with kids. These are houses with people who may or may not have ever, or should have picked up tools of any sort. We'll flag these. Hopefully, you know, we, we were proactive through our program, and nobody's getting hurt over this. It may not make the news, but it's significant. And that's, you know, these are the kind of things we see every day. On sanitary conditions, yes, they're still out there. We're dealing with them. We have some programs in place right now. I think they've actually been reduced down a little bit. We're getting better response on them. We're also integrating, I think, very well with some of the other services that are offered, whether it be through Dakota County or some other self-help services. But they're still out there. We're still trying to deal with them. Exterior maintenance issues, and I wouldn't be surprised if this place isn't recognized. We're still having issues. We've made massive headway on much of these large projects, but we're still slowly working on them. We recognized right away that we would have our hands full for quite a period. And what we've tried really hard to do is make action plans for the property owners, and I'm going to say that private and public, rental, commercial, whatever you want to call it, for bringing these properties into compliance. So, when we see things like people coming into town here, they're, they're proud of this community. Safety issues again. Deck's patios continue to be a problem. You can see we shifted off the pads here. The, it's hard to see in the picture on the right, but you can actually see the vehicle through the rotted holes. We'll go in, we don't want people out on these things. In some cases, a lot of the structures are at the point where they're in need of replacement and repair. A lot of the, the structures in the community, if they've been maintained well, we don't have a whole lot of problems, but many of them haven't. And they may not be entirely obvious until you're there and you're looking at it. Hazardous buildings, we have, and I think everybody's aware of this, at, last time I was in here, we talked a little bit about it. They've been out there, they've been out there for a while. We're still dealing with them, and we're moving forward on eliminating them, not just correcting them, we're eliminating them from the community so we don't have a situation where somebody gets hurt or injured.
It's uninhabitable also.
Absolutely. They're...
And it's a really big hazard. I know this property.
Mm-hmm.
Madam Mayor, I may, just on this observation, and also some of the other ones that you've shown, the exteriors especially, I would define this as blight.
It is.
It's blight. And I think that one of the things that you've been after, Chris, is to eliminate blight and, because blight spreads.
Yeah, like cancer.
And, yeah.
It's symptomatic.
It is.
And when we see blight in a community, that, that, you know, it's something we certainly want to take care of in a timely fashion as soon as possible because it does spread. It is like a cancer, in my opinion.
I'm also aware, because this was brought, that you're also trying to work, and the property owners are out of state, right?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, this particular example, we are in the court process. And after proper notice is served, we'll be coming back to you for us to take the next step to demo these buildings. And we've been working with the property owners, the heirs of the estate with this. So, they're, I don't believe they're opposed to this necessarily. It's just, we have to go through the, the public due process before we can get to the, get these taken care of.
The, the good news is we're addressing the issue.
Yes, thank you.
And no longer, I'm hoping in, I'm hoping to say months now, will we have to have this in, as a danger to the community.
Yeah, thank you.
That's important to do. Exterior structure issues, these oftentimes get overlooked unless you're looking for it. We can see it's washing out, it's eroding, no handrail. We got a couple of different things there. Your average person might not know that. When we start looking at what the number one cause of injury is for most people, it's trips and falls. Here's a good example where this may be an issue. Again, this was on a rental units, too, a complex. Unpermitted work is a huge problem in this city. This one in particular, I had to put in there because it was a twin home. And you can see on one side, they replaced half the roof, and the other side has failed. Even though we have a code ordinance that says they need to replace all at once, this was stuff that isn't readily apparent unless you're familiar with the process. Incidentally, the one with... Incidentally, the one with the bad roof was a rental as well. So that's, we're out there, we see multiple things that I think affect the livability of the community. And it might not be why we're out there, but we do see these things. And we have to put that into the enforcement stream. And again, unpermitted work, this is in addition, put onto a manufactured home. It was essentially moved in, put on four-by-fours, and left there. All sorts of violations here that we could be concerned about, not only with fire issues, EGR issues, building code issues, much of what we, when we've talked about how our enforcement has been with the manufactured home communities, some work that people, in some cases unintentionally, didn't know. And so from my perspective, we've had to add a couple of different components to this. We had to do quite the educational process. And I'm going to get to why that's significant in just a little bit, but, you know, you can see that there. Again, more on a manufactured home, completely huge addition, add-on. Big expense for the owner of the manufactured home as well. In this case, we got an illegal structure. It's going to have to be removed. There's really not anything we can do about it. So it does cause a great deal of stress, not only for the occupant, the tenant who put it, but also is a huge drain on our resources to get it done. And, you know, this is where we've tried very hard to work with the manufactured home community to resolve these issues. And no, that's not Highway 13.
Could be.
But we have seasonality into a lot of our programs too. This is certainly one of those that, it was very popular, I might add, this last year, with long weeds and grass, and continues to be one of those that we divert a great deal of resources to. I think we got the message sent this last year by really looking at our enforcement policies and really tightening them up, that we're not going to see, I'm hoping not, a great deal of repeat offenders next year. Our proactive program, and what I've got here is two little maps. When we originally set the program up, we had to make a plan. You know, it literally is a battle plan. How are we going to accomplish the council goal of sweeping the whole city in three years? The best, our original intentions were to take the city, divide it up into 36 sections. Basically, we're going to do 12 of those sections a year, twice. What we find is a lot of violations repeat themselves after only a few months. And we wanted just to see if those people that we came back were repeating again. And mainly just to see if our program was effective too, were they getting the message? What we found, and this, it's hard to see, and I apologize for the charge here, it was kind of difficult to put on here. We've, we're starting to fall short on meeting those inspection guidelines. We spent a great deal of time with the manufactured home community. We didn't quite anticipate the amount of time we put into that. And so what we ended up doing was taking some of those areas, and they're actually shaded on the map to the right, with those areas that we've, have been through, we've done the sweeps through, and taken any corrective actions that we had. So our battle plan, for lack of calling it anything else right now, is to get into those areas at least once a year. We know we're going to have to put continued focus on some of the other, you know, the other areas, manufactured home communities in particular. Just because I think we do have some disconnections with what's required in code, and certainly different resources that are available to solve the problems.
I can just add to that. So we're about six months behind from where we thought we would be on the proactive because of the extra time we've had to spend the last two years. So we'll get there, but we might not get through the whole city in three years.
Right. Well, I'm hoping what we can do.
You don't have the capacity of the resource to do that also, even though you've cross-trained personnel, but you've also lost personnel.
We've lost personnel and unfortunately have an inspector with a broken ankle right now too. So that doesn't help. And, you know, the type of things that we're seeing down there are very complex. We're seeing multiple violations. We're seeing limited resources for these people to resolve it too. So, and I think council's aware of, you know, we've worked with people as extensively as we could with the resources we have to help them solve these problems before we go any further. You know, our expectation has always been, hey, work with us, we'll help you solve a problem with what resources we have. But at some point, you're going to have to be responsible too. And this is an example here. Again, sheds are always fun, very time-consuming, problematic, unfortunately do cause a lot of fire issues. So we were very creative in how we resolved, or tried to resolve some of those. And also, I think, address the concerns of the neighborhood to not have blight. I don't want blight either. That's bad business. Exterior storage type issues, again, these are things, just on drive-by, that we see from the road. We may not, unless we can get good access, we're not going to see everything. When we see things like this, this is what, if I was looking out, and I always put myself in the perspective of if I was a neighbor. How would I feel looking at this every day? Or is there safety issues? I'm always looking for safety issues. There's several different things on here, in my eye, from my look at it. And of course, trash containers. Yes, they haven't gone away. We can screen them all we want. I'm diligently looking at how other cities are doing this right now. Maybe we can come up with a better idea. But it has been a challenge and continues to be a challenge. I don't see it going away anytime soon unless we find a better mousetrap. So those are a lot of things that we ran into. Just to do a summary, this is important. I was actually, this is the first city I've worked for where we've kept pretty good records, just to see how effectively we were. What we're finding is, and this bears out from last year, about 85% to 87% people comply after just getting a written notice. And most people honestly want to do the right thing. We also have found that a lot of them get very concerned about it. What do I need to do? And call us right away and want to work with us, and I make sure it don't happen again. You know, we tell them, yeah, that's fine. We just want to bring it to your attention. When we started getting into that other 15%, unfortunately, based on the records that we have, also, you know, again, I'll fall back on past cities experience, it's the same people again on some of these things. We try to educate them as best we can. You know, here is, here we're going to do this again, you know, we went through this last year, we went through this year before. We get to a point where it kind of plateaued, toes out on enforcement. So anywhere from 10 to 15%, we end up escalating it up, whether we send a second notice, re-inspection fee, all the way up to a third notice and a citation, you're going to go tell a judge, you know, what happened or what didn't happen in that case. The numbers are fairly consistent though, and that kind of surprised me.
Mary?
If we get what we've asked our legislators regarding our ability to just directly find people, will that help drive down the cost of your program?
I think what it'll do is it'll give us another tool. I mean, there may be instances, what is difficult for enforcement is when we're limited with what tools we have.
Right.
Fines have a place. Re-inspection fees have a place. And how we choose and pick them to find an end is important. So yes, is the answer.
And I'm thinking then, if we don't have to go to court, I mean, certainly there are costs involved in going to court.
Tremendous costs.
I'm jumping to the next, you know, one with a citation. I mean, the numbers keep dropping, but nonetheless.
You still have to go to court.
You still have to go to court, yeah.
Ms. Faulkner? Madam Mayor, members of the council, what we've seen in other cities that have this, when they have the fines and can assess for the fines, the fines are punitive. So they're not $100 and $110, they're $300, $400, $500 a pop. So they get compliance sooner, and if they don't, they make enough money to help cover the costs of the program, or to reduce the cost of the program.
And they could, there's all sorts of alternatives on how we would approach something that, even on ability to pay, or ultimately, we want compliance.
You have a great program that you and I reviewed, Ms. Faulkner.
Our biggest obstacle sometimes is, well, I can't afford to fix things. And our tools right now are fairly limited in how we can say, well, how can we get at least a little bit out of a time? Or how can we get from A to B? So we have to be sometimes creative with that. The more tools we have, the better. What we have seen, and I thought this was really interesting, when we looked at our strike violations now, our strike violations for those aren't familiar with, when we have some sort of police action that could negatively impact perhaps the license establishment, the tenants. We, in at least two years, granted, it's limited data right now, a 20% decrease. And I think there's a couple of different reasons for that. And that's also with my discussions with the property managers, sometimes other tenants, residents, is they're taking notice that we're watching them, that we're counting what's going on there. We've got, we've got a tool through our licenses that we can hold accountability to. And to see a 20% drop off of, you know, several hundred different cases, it's pretty significant. And I think that tells a story in itself. But again, to be, you know, confirm it, we'll have to see over a couple more years' data. So we're spending less resources out there too. Police department's spending less resources too. This comes back to how we've been working as a team as well. And we meet regularly, we talk about, hey, what's going on here? And we make a plan. And I'm finding it very enjoyable to be able to do that. So it's worked out really good. Rental licensing in itself, we've seen some shifts. I think some of it because we didn't have really, really firm numbers on our licensing. And again, this is kind of difficult to see, except with the multifamilies. We knew how many apartment buildings we had. We could calculate where it was. What came as a surprise is we're still, without even looking, finding a great number of single families that are being rented or converted. Today, as a matter of fact, I was in a single-family home that mysteriously had been converted to a duplex. And not just, not just a minor, full kitchen, full everything, full services, all unpermitted work. This homeowner's going to be tearing it all out. And these are the kind of things that we cross about, you know, over that are interesting. We find out a lot of this, not only from police and fire, say, hey, do you guys have this as a licensed facility or no? But oftentimes, we have the tenants call us. In this case, it was a tenant reporting it. So it can become very complicated. And from our enforcement perspective, all of a sudden, what may have been a simple routine complaint call blossoms. And we're finding this quite often. This has been really, again, another good team effort, not only with the police department and fire department when they make calls, but also our utilities. Who's paying what? And all of a sudden, you know, we're finding an increase on them, at least with the single families. Everything else up is up. We've had.
This is a single-family home in a R1 zoning.
Correct. And this is not isolated. This is a common occurrence.
And there was no permit pulled.
Yeah.
And complete conversion from a single family to a duplex.
Right, and unsafe conditions too. We had some mechanical room issues which were venting into, potentially venting into a living, a sleeping area.
Nothing was inspected.
Nobody knew about it. And what we're finding that is that's been very, you know, we're seeing a lot of it. And we'll talk a little bit more about that. But in what we're, I don't think we have the tip of the iceberg yet. I think we still have more that are out there. And the word has certainly been spread. We saw quite a drop in people coming in, all of a sudden, we're finding that aren't licensed, about one-third drop. So those who remain are either new. Much of it might be related to the housing crisis slowing down a little bit too. It's all speculative at this point in time. Our other business licensing has stayed static for the most part. As, and I guess I should have put it in the first slide, we also absorbed some of the licensing, other licensing duties with our department. And the interesting drop here was our drop in massage therapists. I have no doubt it has a result of new ordinance.
Yes.
But the rest have made, yeah, have stayed fairly consistent. We haven't seen any dramatic shifts on that area.
Madam Mayor, members of, these tables and charts are, will be in the monitoring report. So you'll be able to go through them with a fine-tooth comb, so.
Yeah, exactly. To cut to the chase a little bit, what our 2015 goals are be, we need to perhaps clarify some of our licensing processes. What we're really looking for is consistency. And this could be, well, as we move through our regulatory process, we're seeing some things that I think either could be clarified a little bit more or streamlined a little bit more. Appeals is one that, you know, we have some conflicting, well, not conflicting language, but certainly we want some guidance on. We want to work on transitioning our licensing to online services. And that certainly is the future. Not only will that hopefully, and right now, I see it as being something that would free up staff time, certainly make us more efficient on some things. It can be said that, yeah, it takes more time to process a few things, but the long run, in terms of clarity of information we get and how we process things, the better. We want to continue our public awareness campaign. As a topic that we just talked about right now, unpermitted work, trash cans, all sorts of things. We have all sorts of opportunities. We got a wonderful media group here that we want to make more use of. Now that we have a better feel for the scope of our program, I think we can direct those in much better fashion.
May I make a suggestion, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Chris, when you do the, when you do publicity on permitted and unpermitted work, I think that there's a perception out there that permits are issued only as a way to, for a city to raise money. I'm sure this is not news to you. But if, maybe by using some of these examples that you've shown us, visuals might help as to why permits are, why we require permits, because this is the kind of stuff we're seeing. I think that would help all around.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
And I, and it, what we also need to recognize too is, and this is where I sometimes have to have a really good discussion with the property owners and managers, is once you license, let's say a rental, you're entering a different realm. You're a licensed business now.
Yes.
And the rules change a little bit. And we do see some situations where, you know, big stuff should have been done. And so we're looking at how we can increase that a little bit, at least awareness through our licensed contractors too. So it's broad front. It's not only private homeowners, it's also through our licensed contractors too. And this is where we have a kind of a joint initiative, I hope, with our protective inspections folks, saying, hey, you know, we got an issue here. What do you guys think? And I think that's worked out in several situations.
Thank you.
We've also looked at our assessment process and refining a little bit. As I know, council's well aware, we've had some really interesting discussions with how we recover some of our expenses in this room. And what we try, we want to do is make sure that what we're doing is recover as many of our costs as possible, also making sure that we have that process as required statutorily in place, and make sure that's working well. And we're always improving staff efficiencies. This is going to be an ongoing project, much of which is raise that awareness on what we look for. Trying to stay on the top of what's changing in the legislature, as well as what, is there a better way of doing things? And I have no doubt, and I have used many of my resources from other cities to try to put some of these mechanisms in place.
If I can just give an example of that. When we started this program two years ago, we had Mr. Anderson, who was our complaint-based co-enforcement person. We added a code, the proactive inspector, and then two and a half rental license inspectors. So we have five different inspectors, each had their own job. As we've worked through this, and what we've made of change with some staffing changes, now our inspectors are cross-trained. And so our rental inspectors also do the pro, or do the complaint-based code enforcement. So if somebody leaves, we've got backup. If they're in the neighborhood, since they're there already, they can do a couple of different types of inspections, keeps variety for them. And so we have, they have more of awareness of the codes when they're out and about. So we're hoping that that will help us be more efficient with the resources that we have by having those inspectors be cross-trained. by having those inspectors be cross-trained. So just one example of that.
It has a tremendous effect. It minimizes our trips. And, and, you know, I equate it to, again, that complete, community policing model.
Yes.
They have their beat, they have their areas, they have what they need to look at. They do take a lot of ownership in their, in their areas, too. That's, that's, it's really proud to see them do that.
Excellent. And that's, that really increases your efficiencies.
It does, it really does.
Especially when you know, well, when you're cross-trained and you have the codes and all of that in front of you.
And they're out in these areas all the time. So when the mystery signs show up on the boulevard, we know they're there because we just drove through that area yesterday on the way to an inspection. It doesn't have to come from the public.
Yeah.
So that enhances our program all around. And I think that just makes sense.
Good.
We've also reviewed some of our enforcement policies. Well, if we'd like to review it, is, is 1010-7. We have been received, this is one of our items for discussion tonight. We have had some concerns from the public about the length of time it takes to gain compliance. Our numbers, I think, are starting to bear that out a little bit. How much more do we gain with the second and third notices? And to me, that's, that's questionable. In other cities I've worked for, we've had minimize that time. This is, you know, when I look at this, I look at nearly a month to gain compliance, sometimes for something very simple. And I think that's inefficient in some respects. And there's probably a better model out there that we can use.
Well, it might be good for you to suggest instead of 1010-7, is it 555?
That's, that's the item of discussion, I think, at some time in the future with this. We just want to bring it to your attention.
I think the neighbors would also appreciate that. Because they're frustrated with the length of our process.
Right. We've seen that frustration on several instances, whether it be dumpsters in people's yards, long weeds of grass, all sorts of things. We know it can work if we give proper notice and we follow processes. So I, I think at this point in time, that might be something we need to look at for next year.
55.
Yep. And we want to explore additional tools for enforcement. One of my favorite was mentioned tonight, perhaps some administrative authority. I've used it, it works, it works well. It's another tool, again, that makes us more effective and certainly gives our, our ability to work with the resident a lot more leeway. We want to consider updating the property maintenance code. And I think this has been a council item at one point in the past on this. There are several reasons for doing this. It's a recognized standard used in the United States. In many, in many municipalities, many jurisdictions. It's an I code, consistent with, say, the building code or other areas.
Yeah.
Very, in fact, extremely similar to what we're using right now, except really needs updating to reflect some of the things that we have. It helps us to be uniform in our interpretation and.
Well, we adopt the building code, this just makes sense.
It, it, it works, it works.
Yeah.
And.
The International Building Code is what we use.
It's not, it's not going to be a dramatic departure from what we do now, but it's going to be a standardized form. So in terms of enforcement, when we're sitting in a courtroom, we can say, this is commonly used, Your Honor, throughout the United States. And I, I think it's a great tool. And I think what it'll do is help address some of our inconsistencies that we may have with interpretation. We're also coming rapidly up on that three-year review of the whole program. And another reason to bring this up is how, where we need to go. We do have to, we got summer, and I know it's really nice to think about, coming up. When budgets start, budget action starts developing, where we want to go with the program, you know, what council's direction is to go. And, you know, take a look overall in a little more detail on where the program's at and where, where we need to go. So our discussion item, something, the reason why we're here tonight is, you know, considers those changes? You have thoughts?
Council, what do you think? Councilmember Coughlin.
Yeah, I, I think that I'd rather discuss it at a different time than be presented with information. I really, I'll look at those things, but I'm not willing to sit here and with this limited amount of information and make those determinations.
Okay. Councilmember Sherry.
That sounds reasonable to me, but I do want to say I believe you're going in the right direction here. But I think with some specific proposals, I think that would help me, too.
We, we can come forward.
I want to give you what you need to do the job.
Councilmember Wen. Yeah, okay. Yeah. I think it's the right direction. And I think, you know, just with some more information. But I know that we have the International Building Code. This is not a stretch to get there, but just giving more information so others also understand all of that. But I, I think the, the 1010-7 needs to be amended because the complaints that we get from neighbors, they're frustrated with the 1010-7.
I, I, you know.
And maybe if we, if you have some other method that has worked in other cities, that would be helpful. When I looked at this, it's like 555.
There's all sorts of different things that we consider. Certainly, we got some, you know, what we're really looking at is a due process. And we, we make extraordinary efforts to give property owners notice of a violation, to give them plenty of time to correct it to the point of being frustrating for the complainants. And I think there's, you know, we certainly can come forward with some similar, you know, similar or shortened periods that might make sense.
I think what you're hearing, instead of discussion tonight, you're hearing that the, there's consensus that you're moving in the right direction. We like what you're doing, you have great success. So bring the tools that you need to be even more effective in the work that you're doing. Instead of frustrating you and your team, let's make that, those changes and give you the tools that you need.
Beautiful.
Ms. Faulkner.
One last thing, Madam Mayor, as we think about our three-year review after we've had a chance to get into all the units, as we think of how the timeline works out on this, we're thinking of bringing something back to you next summer, so it'd be two and a half years into this. So if there's anything you would like to see in prior to the 2016 budget session, if there's anything you'd like to see, we would like to know that, too, so we can get you what you need as far as information goes.
Councilmember Coughlin.
I, I don't know the timing of it, but, you know, we did talk about the tier system with respect to multifamily. I don't know if that fits into the two and a half year, or we wait another year on that, but I'll leave that to your discretion. I, whenever you think it's the appropriate time, I'd like to see how that would fit into the program.
Anything else? I think this, and, and, and I agree with Councilmember Sherry. We want to make sure you have the tools so that you can be effective and efficient in the work that you're doing. I like that you're moving towards online services also. That's going to be even more efficient. The things that you're moving and doing right now with regard to education and public awareness, that only helps us a great deal. So, but I think, yeah, the IPMC is, I think, is going to be reasonable on a big picture. And I do think we can reduce that policy on that 1010-7.
We'll bring back options of what other cities do and what resources it's taking us to do this, sure.
Absolutely.
Anything else that you need from us? I think you've got good, clear direction. Just come back with some suggestions and.
We, with these tools that we've just talked about, if we get them in place, will be extraordinarily effective.
Okay.
Thank you.
Let's move. Yeah, let's get it done. Thank you very much. Okay, members of the council, we're at roundtable. So the first item on roundtable is, Councilmember Keely, this is the Community Foundation request for a display case at City Hall.
To give you a little background, at a recent meeting, we had, the Burnsville Community Foundation had some awards that were being relegated to someone's house or basement, et cetera. And we talked about what options may exist for a proper place to display them as opposed to being relegated to someone's basement house. Ed might have a few at his house, I think, possibly right now. But, and anticipating that some, they may grow over time, what to do with them? In a discussion with, in another discussion, it came to light that the city has awards that they might need a place to put. So this is a bigger discussion. Unfortunately, our upstairs area of City Hall doesn't really offer any place to put any kind of display case of sorts, to be able to put these awards in for, one for the city, the Community Foundation, and what other else. And then there's other considerations that go into this. So the downstairs display area, which is, which was housing the historical, which was a great display, by the way, I loved it, is really it. So I don't know that we really need to spend much time discussing this tonight. This did open up, I think, a discussion about what should be in City Hall that may be here today and what shouldn't be. But I don't think we need to go there right now.
When I saw this, I had a conversation with Councilmember Keely, and I had a conversation with Mr. Ed Delmore about this. Because for the last 15 years, we've been trying to see where do we put all of the awards that the city receives or any recognitions and all of that? And just like the foundation, it's all over the place. I know that there are some things in the archive, room downstairs. I know that because there are some things that are stashed down there that nobody sees. And there are things probably all over the different departments. So there is no place. Because you look at this foyer, it's all glass. Because of our.
Transparency.
Transparency and conference room, conference room. So you have people working in conference rooms and they're transparent. There's just no place. So I asked Ed Delmore, I said, what do you want to put in these cases? Well, you know, we have a Community Foundation award. Okay, that's one thing. What else? Well, you know, people need to know that we do papers. You have a website. So I, I don't think it's well-defined, but for me, it's just, if it goes downstairs, it loses the purpose of what they're trying to achieve.
Yeah, although that community room is pretty heavily used, so it might be more traffic down there than we think. But it's not our first choice, obviously, when we think of a place to display.
Well, it's not where people are going to go and look at something.
Or awards of the city, et cetera, right? I mean, we really don't. And we're not a city that has a history of showcasing where we've been at on the back.
We're very utilitarian, very utilitarian. Look at this building.
Yes.
Very utilitarian. So I think if you could, and I don't know how others feel, but, Mary.
Well, my, my only thought, and having served on the, the foundation board for a long time, I don't remember any awards, actually. But we did, at one point, we had a little tape over here with papers. And we removed that because we didn't get any business from that. But, but the thing that popped in my mind here, and that is, is we know the foundation is one of many community groups. So would BAC have, you know, would, you know, if you.
Yeah.
Now, is that to say that there shouldn't be some case where we could put community awards in? I don't, I don't know. But I think that to restrict it to the foundation would be not, we, we'd get complaints over that.
Yeah. So. So I think it's just a more complicated, instead of directing staff to look at something that is.
Yeah, as I said, I don't think we need to spend a lot of time on this. And I think downstairs is, is a different discussion on a different day.
Yeah.
For what we have down there.
Okay, great, thank you very much. Okay, all-day work session. Ms. Johnston.
Madam Mayor, Ms. Collins has gone through the schedules and come up with a couple of possible dates for the all-day work session that we have, and January 30th is one, and February 6th is the other. Our plan is to typically, this start has, as we typically, excuse me, typically have at 8:30 and have it at the Best Western Premier Nikletin. I believe we did that last year and it seemed to work well.
Good, good place.
Did I miss anything, Ms. Collins?
No. So how does it look on your schedule, council members? The 30th? Or the, okay, 30th?
The 30th, I see we have a Beyond the Lurven meeting.
Oh, we can always change that.
We can change that. I, and then the 6th? Both days are fine with me.
Okay, Councilmember Coughlin.
I can do it on the 30th, I'm not sure about the 6th.
Okay, well, it's, Councilmember Keely, 30th. Okay, let's go, we got it. Okay, 30th. Okay.
Mac, are you going to send out a?
I will.
Yeah.
And I don't need to do it right now.
And then.
Where will it be this year, do we know?
Best Western.
Okay.
Nikletin. Nikletin.
That's where we're at, right?
Yeah, and we all liked it, and that's why we're going back.
Worked out well.
Yeah. Everybody liked it. Yeah. Yeah, we having bacon for breakfast.
Even though we used to wear slippers and come into the campus by the fireplace at that one place.
Oh, I know, you get sleepy by the end of the day.
Yeah. The environment at Best Western.
Yeah, they, they, yeah.
Productive business meeting.
I thought it worked out well, yeah.
Okay. The next item is just informational. One, this is Mayor's for Parks. And this organization, it's a coalition of mayors, and it, it really has no impact whatsoever. It is about the reauthorization of land and water conservation funds. We've gotten grant money from these funds in the past. And that, all it is, it's trying to preserve and maintain not only our local parks, but the parks in the state and throughout our country. That's all what it is. So I just wanted you to know that because I believe that we can always get funds for our park system, it's always a good thing to just say, yes, we support the Land and Water Conservation Fund.
Sunset's in 2015.
Okay. All right, let's go to reports. Councilmember Keely, do you have anything to report?
I do not.
Okay, Councilmember Wen. Councilmember Sherry.
Just a small thing from I-35. At our last meeting, we had two people from the Mall of America who talked about the construction that's going on over there, which was very, very interesting in their long-range plan. But it did sort of stop the excitement when somebody said, well, how is this going to affect traffic in the area? Because, of course, that's what I-35 is all about. Well, it will, you know, it will impact congestion. So, but, a couple of facts that I thought were fascinating. One was that, that the mall currently has approximately 14 million visitors a year. And they expect with the new additions, which will be office and retail and everything under the sun, they expect that to rise to 22 million a year. So it was fascinating. So that's all I have.
Okay, Bill?
Nothing.
Okay, I only have two short ones because I think it's very interesting. At our Regional Council of Mayors meeting, we had the Commissioner Tingertall talk to us about the Minnesota Housing Finance Agency. One of the takeaways that I brought away from that is in their strategic plan and also in their development plan, they now will look at helping seniors, and not just first-home buyers, but when you're going to go and refinance and you're in a fixed income, they have a program for that. So it's not only for first-time home, home buyers. So seniors who are wanting to refinance and they qualify, that will also look at their, they'll do that and also will include closing costs and all of that. So I took that away because of the senior population that we have.
Will there be financial, would they, would they have to qualify that on a?
Yeah, they'll have, you know, if they're on a fixed income.
Oh, well, but, I mean, I could be on a fixed income of $150,000 a year, which I'm not.
But qualify.
But I mean, a fixed in, but I think fixed income.
Yeah.
Can mean a lot of things.
Qualification.
So you'd have to qualify, there would be need, there would be need.
Yes.
That's what I want to know, thank you.
There will, there is qualification. So, so I thought that was interesting, but it was really good. So, so I thought that was interesting, but it, it was really good. The other is that we had Commissioner Charlie Zelli come to talk to us about transportation this year and what's going to go on at, at the legislature. And he talked to us about that the best way of looking at, at transportation is the same way that we look at things here. We have a 20-year plan, and we have a five-year capital improvement plan. So he likes to look at a 50-year vision, a 20-year plan, and a 10-year funding method of looking at that. And he talks about the state funding gap and how we're going to preserve and maintain our roads and bridges is where the most need is. And then, of course, he, he talked about what's going to be before the legislature this year. And of course, I zero right in, and I saw the 35W Bridge over the Minnesota River. And that's where the, there's $5.5 million that's allocated for the design work. But he says, to improve and to make us competitive, we need over $1 billion to get what needs to be done, over, over billions of dollars. And so that's, that was the most interesting thing with regard to the Regional Council of Mayors. And then we celebrated our 10-year of impact. And then Heather and I, with our municipal legislative commission, that meeting was really about our new website. We did have Senator Scott Dibble talk to us about transportation. It seems to be the theme that trends on everything. And then we also recognized Representative Ann Lucheski for her work in support of our initiatives. And then Terry Lowe talked about the website and the logo and tagline. And then we honored Mark Bernatson from Bloomington, who is retiring. And then we went to adopting our legislative agenda and the election of new officers. And then our breakfast meeting. Did I miss anything? International Festival Board is moving. There are, we were starting our meetings and making sure that we're all ready for the summer.
They're not moving their offices, they're just moving.
We're moving the agenda forward. Yeah, the International Festival, yeah, they're, they're just, right now, just doing all that work. And of the festival?
Yeah.
There is a date, but I didn't write it down. It's in July. It'll be warm. Yes, it'll be warm.
And not raining?
No, not raining. And then our Convention and Visitors Bureau, we, there was not much on our agenda except the budget. And, and then we have the Executive Director's Evaluation, and that's coming up. We talked about the Kennedy Center. That's moving right along, and we need.
TV spot.
Oh, yes. And we need $8,000, and we'll raise the money to help with the transportation and the, and the dinner. And then we are now moving to have a TV program that will impact, one, two, three, four, five, six states. So it'll be running, and it, and it's a partnership with Fox, with Channel 9. So that's what's going on. Jenny, anything else on that?
No, that was it.
So lots of good work. And I don't have anything else. Anybody else? Heather? Jenny? Steve? If nobody has anything, we are now adjourned by acclamation. We're 44. Okay. We're just only 44 minutes late.